Call the meeting order, please. We're gonna start with a public comment. Somebody has something they'd like to say. Raise your hand. I'll recognize you. You come to the podium, address the board. You have three minutes.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
State your name.
Yes, Bob Carey. And I'm an attorney on behalf of FedRock Gardens. I'm here with Bob Munger and John Forty. And I would appreciate three minutes. I can do three minutes.
Okay.
We were supposed to be on the agenda, and through my oversight, I did not get Julie in our proposed schedule on Thursday. I was preparing for the planning board hearing, and I got it due on Friday. It is the same schedule that you approved for July with one exception. Instead of one public event, we asked for two public events for August 4th and August 25th. Otherwise, it would still be the same schedule of Tuesday through Saturday for private tours, no more than two tours a day and 30 people per tour. Per tour. I'm here because it is a matter of economic vitality for FedRock Gardens. They are essentially a business that has to go month to month. That's part of this process, and we accept that process, and we're patient with the process. But to be able to plan would help immensely. If you would consider keeping the same schedule so we don't have to come back for September and August, we also appreciate, or for September and October, we appreciate that, too. We worked before the planning board last Thursday night. They, of course, would have final say in terms of scheduling. That was something we did discuss among other issues. So that's why I'm here tonight, during the public session, to ask for the approval for this schedule for August, and also if you would entertain it for September and October as well. And I'll entertain any questions you may have. I'll offer one thing, too. Before the hearing last Thursday, I asked Karen if there had been any new complaints. Last time we were here was July 2nd. Of course, complaints that were explained, but I'm not aware of any new complaints since then. So we have been able to monitor and adhere to that schedule without any incident.
Questions? I think, no questions? Is this kind of...
Public comment, so we don't...
I'm sorry. Yeah. You're requesting us to make the decision tonight relative to what you...
I am. The reason for that is they have a hard time scheduling and staying open if they can't. And if we have to come back in two weeks, that's two weeks if they lose, maybe three weeks by the time it gets back on schedule. It's not an enormous schedule, and it's the same schedule that we've been living by, with the exception that we'd like two public days a month. So it helps us plan, and helps us advertise, and helps us, you know, give people some assurances that they'll still be there. And based on the planning board's meeting last Thursday, they were talking about six days a week. They were talking about limitations in terms of the parking and other issues. So I think with some concessions that we've already made and others that we will make, I think it will be something that is open for business with a set definite schedule for next year and maybe even this year, because we're back on August 30th for the planning board. So we're making progress, and I'm here just to hope that they allow the business to continue to run for August, and also if you consider September and October.
Mr. Chairman, may I suggest at this point that we just take it under advisement, since you're not only on the schedule, but we'll take it under advisement. Okay?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Public comments? Okay, we're gonna move on to number three is Amy Schmidt, Solid Waste Advisory Committee application. I've been advised that Ms. Schmidt has an emergency with her husband in the hospital. But we have gone through her resume, and I, she is one of my neighbors, so I personally can vouch for her abilities. And I thought we could go ahead and vote on putting her on the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. We have four people for the committee now, I think. And we wanna try and get that formed and get it acted.
We actually received another application today from Dean Rubine. So he's along with us tonight if the board also wants to entertain...
I think we're very familiar with Dean Rubine also, aren't we? So we could make a decision on those, too?
Yeah, I feel very strongly. I read over the resume of Amy's, and I think she's well qualified.
So, 'cause I noticed under number eight, we've got another one.
On the presented agenda?
Yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Stevens.
So...
He's just not coming. He was separate, because he's not coming here tonight.
Okay, but that would make a total of how many?
Five. Five. We lost one.
Oh, you lost one?
We lost one.
Okay. Do you have any amendments at some point?
No.
No?
So why don't we make this a combined? I recommend, I recommend that Amy Schmidt or Andy Stevens and Dean Rubine be appointed to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee.
Second. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Karen?
Do you want to sign these when we sign the rest of the consignments?
Yes. Sure. Old Mr. Van Aken. Toby Van Aken, transfer station manager. Boy, are we glad to see you.
How's it going this evening? So you're aware of Lamprey does not do any hauling anymore, so...
Yes.
What I did was, I was looking into some contracts, and I came up with a couple of them that have a lot of trucks. And trucks that we could use to haul our materials and stuff. So right now, we're going through Lamprey still for hauling at $250, $252 right now at this point for the hauling fees. Now, we went through Shipyard. Shipyard is actually picking it up for us at this time through Lamprey. Now, we're one of the only towns right now that are still going through Lamprey at this point. So I got ahold of Shipyard, and I started talking to them about, you know, if we're gonna go through you guys, what is it gonna cost for a contract with you guys? They told me like $300 per haul. But then again, if we go contract, you might as well sharpen your pencils up a little bit to, you know, get the price down a little bit. So we got it down. On your paperwork here, you see that it's down to $275. And they're a little, they're a little steep still, because I went through and talked to Waste Management, and Waste Management has the swap containers. They can swap them out. And they're asking doing $240 per haul versus what we're paying now is $252. So it's a little cheaper, but what happens is they, they'll bring a can from Turkey, bring it down, and then they take our container up there, leave the container there, and we call back. So they keep swapping it back and forth. It saves a lot of time. And plus, we're not, we have our cans. We got all the cans there on site, so we don't have to worry about an empty space. So sometimes if we overfill a container, we're looking to lay in trash on the side of the, side of the building, inside, leave it stacked up, and we don't want to do that. We want to be able to keep them in the containers, all the trash and debris. So it's good to have that switch once we got a container there. So I was doing some numbers on the hauling fees. We do hauling. We haul about roughly eight to 10 cans of just MSW. And just on the low side, about eight, eight times a month is like $23,000. So I started doing the figurants, and I didn't complete the numbers yet. So we're looking at a little between $28,000 to $30,000 for hauling for next year for coming up. I know that, because I started doing some research and some admin, but I didn't get the final numbers down on it. So it's something that we could look into, looking, I guess, towards Waste Management to do this. I think that's probably the best way to do this at this point. Because I tried, I called other places, or they don't want to sign any contracts or deal with any municipal towns due to a lot of construction debris. There, a lot of people are busy now, constructions, and their containers are out. They don't want to dedicate themselves to one area. But they, these two here, they're big. They have big fleets. They're dependable. And that's all I can say at this time. So it's a, something we gotta look into and make a decision on who are we gonna go with. Or also, the other thing we could do is put it up a bit. That's the other option we could look at.
What's that?
Put it up a bit.
So the question, which your recommendation?
Waste Management.
You have enough money in the budget?
That this, at this point, I can't give you a definite answer. But we have $26,000, and I think it's in the...
And what'd you say?
And I think it could come up to between $28,000 to $30,000 for the hauling fees. So it's a good possibility, and we have to talk to the Budget Committee about this during this time it comes up.
Is this something you're trying to do now, or you're taking it next year? You're trying to get a feeling here.
Do it now. Do it now while we can. But we could, if you want to wait, we could wait another couple of months. We could buy time, still go through Lamprey, and continue what we're doing now until we final, make a final decision. But if we could do it now, let's do it. Gonna be done with it.
Toby, can you explain again in terms of hauling the swap? Go through that again for me?
The swap.
With the containers? Because we own ours.
What they do is, we own ours. I went through that with Pete. What they'll do is, one of our, if I call tomorrow, MSW can one of the cans, they'll bring one of the cans up there at Turnkey and drive down this way with it, an empty one, pull out ours, switch it, and then bring ours up there and dump it and leave the can up there. And they go on to other things. And then when we call them again, they'll bring the can back down. So they're just moving things back and forth, but they're our cans. They're not staying up there.
So one of our cans...
That's their swapping.
Kind of permanently stay at Waste Management?
Not permanently, no. No, this is, that's why they consider it a swap. They drive up, then when we're ready for another can, call them again, they'll bring the same one back down to switch out another one. So they'll bring their can. Takes a few minutes to figure it out. If you go with the other one...
Huh? What's that? I'm not following you, because, okay, the first time they bring down one of their cans, swap it with ours, so we have one of their cans in one of our hoppers or whatever, and they have one of our cans up there. What happens to our can when it sits up at Waste Management?
Just sits there until we're ready to call it back.
And then they bring that can back?
Back and switch it out with the other one.
For the next time?
For the next time at haul. So they always have something going back and forth. Same thing with the open containers with Urco, they'll do the same thing with the open containers. Bring a full one, and plus they have a, if we had to do two at a time, they have the tractor, they have a hitch for the container. They can carry two of them instead of one.
I guess the word, I think, what Scott was getting at, it just remains there. It's ours, and not use it to have somebody else's.
No, nobody else uses it. That's ours. It goes, it comes back to us. And nobody else uses it but us. They're just coming down with another can, so we have something there.
So what it does is it saves the round trip?
Yeah, so...
So instead of them coming down, picking up ours, then bringing ours back?
And then bring it back down, and then go back up again.
Then we'd end up filling two cans, and they'd have to haul both of them up there. If both cans remained here, then they would have to take the, take two cans up there if we filled them both up.
My concern is, we bought those cans, they're in good condition, and I don't want anybody else using them.
No, no, it's not like that. So what I can do next time, I could always have the sales guy at Waste Management discuss that section with you guys, if they want to go through this contract, if you want to go through it.
The other question I have in terms of hauling services, the contract we have with Waste Management now gives us a discount, some kind of discount, I think, or something? Would you take a look at that and ask them about that?
The Waste Management?
Yeah, there's something that's, that's in the contract about that.
I think it's if, if they end up doing a hauling, we get another dollar off the tipping fee, maybe, or something like that.
Okay. Can you clarify that? I remember there's something, there's some clause, I don't remember which one it is, it's something to deal with in terms of if we use them or haul them. That would save us some money.
Well, is Waste Management, for lack of a better word, the cheapest?
Yeah, pretty much, yes. Yeah, they are, at this point. You want to sit on this, or you want to move?
Well, I'd like to see if we have a conversation with Waste Management about this discount or what it is. Can you clarify that? Because that's gonna save us some money, not tons, but a lot of money's money.
Plus, I can actually figure out the, what's gonna cost us for that whole year, make sure we're in that budget range.
Because to follow up on yourself is, of course, questioning in terms of, you've got $26,000, how much do you anticipate spending in addition to that?
How many, how many potential areas do we have that would, that would do this? How many, how many are there out there that we could go to and ask them for a bid?
Um, there's quite a few of them, but a lot of them are, they don't have the trucks in demand. They do have, there's quite a few out there, I'm sure, but there's, I can't give you that answer there. But I called a few of them, and they just, they don't want to sign municipal contracts, I guess.
Well, contracts, okay. They don't want to sign municipal contracts.
They want to be locked in, but they're not really on a 24-hour base if you need them the next day.
So we don't have a contract with any of them now?
No.
It's just...
We don't have any contract to anybody at all.
They have something that they've given us stating what the fee will be, so...
Yes, yeah.
Well, is the $252, wasn't that what we were paying under Lamprey?
Yes.
Okay. And they honored that? Or no?
No, they didn't.
Now we're paying $275?
No, we're not paying $275. We're only paying the $252 right now at this point. Going through Lamprey. So Shipyard sends the billing to them.
Right, right.
And then they do the discount, and then whatever that agreement was.
So that arrangement has to come to an end?
Yes.
It does?
I'm sure it does. Yes, it does. I have to give her a call and let her know so I could make the arrangements. Call Valerie, obviously, she'll take care of taking us off instead. So Shipyard won't have to come and pick us up, or if we go with Shipyard, they'll continue what we're doing. But the fees are gonna be, they're pretty up at $275.
I guess I was just trying to get a, if there's a deadline here, is the deadline coming from Lamprey?
We have a, we have a couple, we have a couple of months we could play with this.
Okay.
So if you want to go that, I think we should, to a degree, but this will give you an idea what we're looking at, but I recommend that Waste Management, they're dependable, and the services are there, and they got the hauling trucks. And that's the important part, is being there, if we need them the next day. We got a fleet of vehicles.
I'm sorry. Is there any benefit to going to bid for this? Is this kind of expensive?
Well, yeah, I'd kind of like to get something in writing from these guys, saying here's what we'll do. I mean, this has all been over the telephone, or you have?
No, no.
I haven't looked at the attachment.
It's in the attachments.
Okay.
When you see the attachment, you'll see Shipyard, and you'll see Waste Management, and you'll see the numbers.
Just those two?
And breakdown. Yes.
Okay.
I think at this point, it was probably a little bit like you had suggested, you know, like, I'm kind of leading with, same way, but if we get some kind of...
Well, that's the other option, if you want to go up a bid, you have to, we have to look at the whole thing here. So at least I know, at least they can go ahead and get the numbers for you next time around on what's gonna cost exactly for the hauling. What we have to decide which ones we're going with.
Okay, so I'm just confused. Are we putting a bid out, or are we just gathering any more information, coming back in the next minute?
And we'll just get, in my opinion, just gather more information. But that's only my opinion.
Per day, too?
I mean, a little more information with respect to, Toby said he was gonna outline for the year, but also get a salesperson to actually tell us exactly.
Yeah, I could actually, he'll come here to the meeting if he wants, and then he can pick his brain on the, on the hauling stuff and how they're working it system.
No, I would just, if there's three or four of them out there, I would like to get something against all three or four of them and compare it with the price on us, so...
Then go up to bid.
Then go up to bid.
Then you just put it up in bid, right, if you want to get all those numbers.
Tell them to illustrate or make a comment on it.
That's fine. Just want to know what they're...
They just have a template for that kind of stuff anyways.
Somebody does.
Yeah, somebody does.
Goes up to bid.
Let's go up to bid.
At least you have the numbers, roughly, you know what they're looking at.
Okay.
And in the process, can you clarify with Waste Management in terms of that discount we get?
Yep.
Was that labeled in the contract?
Yes.
I can't see anything.
I don't know, something's thinking if you get a dollar off the tipping.
That sounds familiar. I remember there's some incentive in there for us to go with them, so...
We're doing a lot of the swap shop.
Yeah. Yeah. Swap shop. Okay. This week, tomorrow, hopefully, you'll be in to put the garage door open, and the electrical parts, you're gonna go in, electricians and Jim Banks and Howie are gonna come down and put it all in for us. The, Howie came down a couple days ago, so I have to, haven't heard from him back yet, so I'm sure they'll be in this week to get things rolling in there and get that completed, and then get the shelving, in the shelving part. So the shelving has been coming, people have been donating shelvings and stuff, so I've been seeing those. So I've been, once that's all in, we're ready to go.
If you had to give a date for the ribbon cutting, when would that be?
Shirley. Shirley's coordinated with the volunteers and stuff, so I've been helping out, rearranging the volunteers, and I'll come down and put in, you know, bring, put in shelving if need big.
Well, all I know is the neighborly articles of gaining in numbers every day, so I would like to be able to shoot for something.
Okay. I don't really know. I'm hoping September, but that's kind of a secret.
September?
November, September.
No, I think it'd be about Halloween or two, couple of days.
We'll see. Anyway, I do have some changes because we are low on volunteers.
I know.
Okay. So we're proposing the new hours, which would be Tuesday morning, 7 noon, Thursday afternoon, noon to 5:00, and then all day Saturday. In closing, for half the days on Tuesday and Thursday, they're low attendance days anyway, and it would give us other people, other volunteers, time to go in and coordinate and to clean up, you know, what, what needs to be done. You know, when people aren't there, it's hard to rearrange and organize. So that was our thought on that. Plus, we need less volunteers if we're not opening as many hours. So that's one of our thoughts. Another thought is, when we have this opening, the first week, we would be open Tuesday morning, the next week, Tuesday and Thursday, and then the third week, all three days. That would give people and volunteers, because we go some new volunteers, time to get adjusted to, you know, bringing stuff in and going to bulky waste and getting coupons and, you know, the different things that we do. So it would be kind of staggered, plus the amount of stuff we're holding would also be staggered.
We have to assume there's not gonna be a backlog that comes...
Right. Another thing, if we are closed, we're wondering if there perhaps could be a security camera there, because people may come in and just dump things like they had before. Can there be a security camera, and would there be a fine of some sort if they were, you know, down dumping stuff? You know, we had all kinds of surprises at the last one, because it was out of the range and, anyway, I'm throwing that out, just as an observation. My last thing, well, next to last, what about parking? Where are we actually gonna be parking? Because we can't clog up bulky waste. Do we park from where it's at to out to the end of where that road splits? Do we park on the right side of the road and walk across?
All right, we'll, we're gonna, we got the parking, we'll line up where we would park at. So we're gonna, I'm gonna put some stone out to some blockage of signs and all that when we first start. Then we got an idea what location, then move on, move forward from there, so...
But did the original...
Just be right in front of the...
But did the original plan, there were some plans that were drawn up, but...
Yeah, the parking in front, but about 10 feet away, 20 feet away from the garage door area. That's that area there.
I'll leave that.
Yeah, thanks for leaving it up to Toby.
Yeah.
Your recommendation.
Sure do.
Yes.
Is there, is there a base across the road?
Uh, there is, but we gotta be careful, because, you know, it's pretty close. We want to keep the vehicles in, because you got a lot of young ones running around and that, plus people unloading. So we don't also want to block the traffic flow either.
Why are there young ones running around?
They like the place.
Yes. We'll talk about that, Toby.
Okay. And then I'm also discussing with my volunteers of having a table at the Lee Fair, and maybe have bookmarksers with our new times on it, and on the back would be the fees for bulky waste. And just to let people know, if you do want to volunteer here, some, you know, times that we could to get more, you know, enthusiasm. I've already had one meeting at the Live Fair for new volunteers. We got nobody.
How many volunteers do you have?
We have seven.
Seven? Good.
So, yep, we're glad for the seven.
Yeah.
But we could use a few more.
I would say at this point, maybe we can have the town administrator put in the crime. If you make up a little request and get the town administrator, and she'll get it in as many places as we can have the time. I think your idea of the Lee Fair is a great idea as well.
Okay, thank you.
Also, Toby, we could actually...
Sit there.
Put in something, if they have to purchase the item on this item sheet, they have to purchase like a mattress or whatever. Come by now and start purchasing tickets now. Purchase them, they'll keep a lot of jamming up. You know, just get the tickets, and all you gotta do is hand it to the volunteer, she'll log it in, tag it, and they'll get the ticket back. Unless somebody grabs it.
Okay. Is that good? Did we, you came up with, or is it, you asked for increased fees? We didn't approve those yet, right?
The what?
Increased fees.
No, no. We're looking at, we're still at the old one right now. But that's part of the Solid Waste Committee, I think, we're trying to get together, and we can look into it a little harder.
Just so that when you're doing the list for the fair, that the old price is not proposed.
No, no, no.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Do you have any comments?
Yes, ma'am.
Should I come up here?
Yes, ma'am, please. Take your name. Andrew.
Hi, I'm Sally Fleming. I live on Osprey Lane in Lee. I just want to say that the natives are restless about this swap shop, and here in September it was like, are you kidding? A lot of people are starting to write on Friends of Lee, and I think that more communication would be a good thing. People don't know what's going on. We do have the wonderful forum of Friends of Lee, and volunteers, when I go to the dump and ask people, you know, what's going on, "Well, we don't have enough volunteers." Well, you know, they say, "Build a ball field," and they'll come. People just don't know what's going on. And there's also talk that there's politics, that some people don't really want the swap shop, and so stuff is happening. So I would, I'm not accusing you, I'm just saying, there's just a lot of undercurrent going on with this, and I think it would be a good idea to be much more communicative and for us to feel like there's more transparency with it, because the swap shop was taken with it, because the swap shop was taken down without people being asked. It's taken almost a year for this little hut to go up, and personally, I would really like to see it happen tomorrow, and I'm not the only one. So, um, people have yard sales and they don't have any place to take their stuff. It's the ultimate of recycling, and I think that it's a good thing for our town.
Yes, ma'am, we understand, and realize, realize that a lot of this work is being done by volunteers.
Well, that's another thing.
Excuse me, a lot of this work is being done by volunteers. Uh, in some cases, the people managing have been impacted by some personal issues that occurred in their life.
I understand.
And believe me, we want to, we want to get the swap shop going as soon as possible. And to my, my knowledge, there's never been a political issue talking about, well, we don't want it or whatever.
Well, I'm just saying, that's what I've been hearing on the Tom Toms.
I just wanted to straighten it out. I'm not aware of any, any big movement to say, no, we don't want the swap shop, just the opposite.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay.
Can we, um, ask the transfer station manager to put some in the prior to the status of the swap shop, and if it's created open, yeah? Can we get more community here?
Okay, Toby?
Okay.
And, uh, let's, let's just try and keep everybody informed a little bit better about progress and see how we do.
A few photos, Toby, would not go to Y either.
Sir?
I'm Robin Wanderlick, and I live at One Alderboro Clay, and we did Take Five Dog Care. Um, I just want to speak in support of actually getting bids for the, for the trash removal and stuff, because we, we had, we had Shipyard, and then we went to a couple others, and we went, I mean, we had, um, Waste Management, we went to a couple others, and we're with Shipyard, and we're getting a really good deal with them. So I think putting it out to bid is a good idea, let them put some criteria on it and let them try to get our contract.
Okay, thank you. All right. I've gone blank. Here. So, Tom Bronfield, chief of police.
Good evening. It's, uh, time for our annual equitable sharing agreement certification. Basically, this is our Department of Justice drug forfeiture account. Every year, we have to show what we've spent or haven't spent, what the balance is. Uh, Robin and Joanne both go over it. Uh, basically, all you need to do is, in a public meeting, certify that the numbers are correct.
Are the numbers correct?
They are.
Very square, isn't it?
The government we're dealing with.
The government we're dealing with.
So, we're not signing anything?
He's not signing anything.
It just has to be a matter of record. It's just a matter of record.
So, we only had like six hundred dollars?
No.
No, tens of thousands.
That would be nice.
What do we have?
It was at one point.
Six hundred?
Yeah.
Well, actually, it's not fifty-two.
Yeah, fifty-two dollars and thirty-seven cents.
At one time, it was a big run.
Tens of thousands.
Yeah.
About a lot of good equipment.
Sure did.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion or something?
Do we need a motion?
The minutes can reflect that you're bringing, that the amount is accurate. I don't think that the unit says.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Carlton.
Jeff Carlton, Twenty-fourth Soya Road in New Hampshire. So I am here tonight, because I had come in earlier in the year, and requested a lower use for the fields at Little River Park and Stevens Field. And if I believe correctly, Mr. Bugby said, please speak with, actually, all three of you did, my bad, please speak with ORYA, get with them, which I have done, and then Mr. Bugby said, we would consider possibly reducing the rate. Maximum Velocity is a nonprofit organization based in Lee, and we strongly feel that we should be treated like other nonprofit organizations. Uh, we've got a nonprofit organization that's using the fields for free, and we're not asking for that, because we believe that we should pay something. When I was on the REAP Commission for eight years, we worked hard and diligently to implement Little River Park, which has become a gem to our town. And I believe that a fair rate should be paid, so that it can help offset those people that don't necessarily use the park. So, I put together and filled out the information, had given it to Macload, and then I dropped it off with the town. Uh, in it, I just put down the use for Stevens Field, because Matt had said, feel free to get a COI to me, and begin working on a Town of Lee's usage agreement form. We can process one of the forms at Stevens, and once the initial game schedules come out from the Lees, we can work MV scheduling on that. I only feel that we should set a rate for the baseball field and the rectangular field and Stevens Field, uh, for that. Now, last year, we used Stevens Field free of charge, however, it wasn't free of charge, we paid for the porta potty to be put in. Um, we brought our equipment in, because without the equipment, you couldn't use the field, so without the goals, without painting the lines, and obviously without having sanitary. We did not lock up the porta potty, we felt that it was smart to be able to use that, because I see a lot of people parking there and locking their dogs and other people going out and using the fields out back. So I thought that was a, a way to give back to the community, instead of locking it up, leaving it open, and let people use it that, that might need to use that with, uh, either playing on that field or walking their dogs or walking on those paths by themselves. With that there. Um, Mr. Bugby, I went back and watched the video when Matt came, and, um, Matt recommended to the selectmen to raise the fees. Um, and this isn't directed just to you. Another nonprofit organization came to you guys and recommended a fee increase, based off of numbers from Burwick Academy, Phillips Exeter Academy, and Brewster Academy, from what I gather. Those are all private schools, and they have uses. I, I don't pay for that. When I go to PCA, we pay fifty dollars to use a field from five, five-thirty on, on an evening. When we play a game, there's two fees, and I would be happy to, uh, give all three of you a letter of recommendation that was written to Annette Brown, from my contact over at PCA. So in the soccer world, you have seventy-seven, which is U-ten and below, ninety-nine, which is U-elevens and U-twelves, and then eleven v eleven, which is U-thirteens, and all the way up to, uh, old fart soccer guys like me. With that, you see the fee that we paid, thirty dollars per game, and that was eleven v eleven, and then fifteen dollars per game for the U-nine and below, excuse me, the U-12 and below, because they only use half a field with that there. They provide the porta potty, uh, we help monitor the fields, we're on the fields constantly, uh, we make sure that we change our wear pattern and move things around, so that we're not consistently moving at one spot there. Annette shot me an email, and she said that Sarah Love had sent this email, and I was blessed, because I didn't call, I didn't ask, and I thought that it was great, that Annette had done a lot of research and stuff like that. This does go to Mr. Bugby, when Matt was here, you recommended, or you asked, if we raise those fees, will we lose income that goes into the recreational revolving account? So last year, Seacoast United, which is a for-profit organization, paid fourteen, one thousand four hundred and seventy dollars to use the fields on six, one, and seventeen. This year, they only did five hundred and seventy-five dollars. Maximum Velocity used the fields and for the full year, uh, which was on nine-twenty-one, we paid seven hundred and thirty-five dollars. So I just, there in a, a quick number, based off of year-to-date numbers, just because I feel that that's the best way to do it, that's how I do it in my business and everything else, that if you take those into consideration, uh, the same timeframe in 2017, the recreational revolving account brought in one thousand four hundred and seventy dollars in rental fees, and a total of two thousand two hundred and five for 2017. Uh, Seacoast United for-profit paid one thousand four hundred and seventy, MV paid seven hundred and thirty-five. So if you just deduct the fourteen seventy from the five hundred and seventy-five dollars, you took in less revenue from the same period on that. So, that, I'd be happy to give you a picture of the revolving, would you like this, Mr. Brown?
Sure. Thank you.
Also, in our district, I'll just, I know it doesn't pertain to just Lee, but another organization uses Durham, Lee, and Madberry fields. Uh, in front of me, I have the field layouts that they use at Tibbetts Field, that describes U-thirteen, U-twelves, all the different types of layouts that they use over at those fields, that I thought would be helpful for the selectmen just to kind of know. So they've got an eleven v eleven field that they can use there, U-eights, U-tens, U-twelves, and I've seen all of them actually practicing together throughout the day. Generally, there's two practices a week, and then you also have an upper Madberry field that's there. So I just wanted to give this to you. With this configuration in Little River Park, the multi-purpose field, as it is called, you can do an eleven v eleven one way and have one game. U-twelves and elevens, you can run perpendicular to it, so you can do two games at the same time, so half the field. On the rate, you guys actually have it set at fifty dollars an hour per half-field on the sheet there. So I just figured that this would be wonderful information to have, so that you guys can see how fields are used throughout the district. I'd be happy to leave this if you guys would like that, you just let me know, and I'll be happy to give it, give it to you. So, what I'm asking for is just to be treated as a nonprofit organization based out of Lee and have a reduced rate. Uh, I've given you an example of what we do pay there. Um, I also know that Brentwood charges twenty-five dollars an hour, and these are more in line to what we are as, as an organization, as a town, and what Little River Park was, was set up for. So what I'm asking for is, is to have a rate set for the baseball field and for the multi-purpose field and for Stevens Field. Also know that the town does not own any equipment for soccer, so the other fields that I have rented in the past have all of that equipment, and they provide the porta potties. So, when I was on the REAP Commission, we started the baseball field and then planned out from there, but we also made it so that I know for a fact that we can play soccer in that outfield. So it is something that can be done. It's irrigated, it's at a one percent pitch, um, and it's maintained pretty nicely outfield for that. So, I'm just going to leave it at that. Do you guys have a question for me that I might be able to answer for either one of you?
I have a question. Um, Jeff, can you go through, you get this list for the practice schedule for fall 2018 at Stevens Field.
Yep.
Did I hear you right? You're, you want to schedule at Stevens Field, but if the fields are available at Little River Park, you use that instead? Is that what I was hearing, or is I wrong?
That's a possibility, however, um, I have eleven v eleven teams, that I'd like to, to use those fields and practice with those fields too, a little bit bigger space than out here, and this is not irrigated, those fields are, are much better shaped, they're irrigated, nicer fields on that. Um, but in talking to Matt to play an eleven v eleven game, I would not be able to play an eleven v eleven game out here, it's not long enough and wide enough.
Okay.
It would be very narrow if I, if, amazingly narrow.
So it would be one or the other, not both at the same time, possibly, in terms of the days that you've got?
It could be possibly both.
It could be possibly both.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes. Uh, that's based on availability.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't want to be presumptuous.
There's nobody that's signed up on a permanent basis for Stevens Field, right? As far as we know?
No. And I don't think ORYA used it last year.
Okay.
And I don't know that they have any plans to use it this fall either.
No, ma'am. No.
So just, the dates that you listed, um, so if you were going to use the, the, um, field at Little River Park, would those be additional dates?
I'd like to have some additional dates, yes, please. Yes, please. Um, I spoke to Matt about using the baseball, and he had made mention that there might be a U-fourteen, fifteen baseball team for fall ball to use that. They would probably practice one or two days a week, so that could leave some opportunity for the outfield to be able to be used properly, and they don't play home games there. The two Lees that I know of that play fall ball play up in Concord, and they play over in Rochester.
Just for the record, you're asking for a reduced fee? Where, how much will you, what is the fee now?
For which field, sir?
Well, you said you wanted the baseball field, the multi-purpose, and Stevens.
Oh, okay, so as it reads...
You started off, but you never finished this thing.
I like that, Mr. Lacrosse. So, the way that it states currently right now, for the usage fees, it states that Little River Park multi-purpose field is fifty dollars an hour for half of the field.
Okay, I got it.
So if you were to use an eleven v eleven team out there, that would be the whole field that would, you would need for a hundred dollars an hour, which at PCA, we pay thirty dollars to play a game, which ra, roughly is about an hour and a half to an hour and forty-five minutes.
Yep, I got you.
The baseball field is set at fifty dollars an hour currently on, on the sheet that had, that was put out. And then the town field, which is next to the school, is twenty-five dollars, and Stevens Field is twenty-five dollars, and those are all per hour.
Okay.
Thank you for the correction, I appreciate that.
Anything? So, we follow up with that, that's what the fees are now, what are you requesting? You've requested a reduced rate, what are you requesting? Anything?
Do you have a number in mind for each one?
Well, what I currently pay at Portsmouth Christian is fifty dollars to use from five-thirty on. So in the spring, you have more sunlight, so I'm there probably like three hours. And then when we play our games, it's thirty dollars, and that is for eleven v eleven, and then fifteen dollars. So I think that that's a fair rate to pay, for which with PCA, we pay upfront. And then if we get a rain out, we don't want to use a field, because we don't want to ruin the field, we get a credit back. So we keep a spreadsheet, we send it on, and, and that comes back that way. So, that's how it is, is set up with them. I would be more than honored to do the same thing. More than honored to do the same thing. Just so you guys know, um, there's two checks that are cut. There's a check that's cut for practices, and then there's a check that's cut for games. That's because the game schedule does not come out until towards the end of August on that, and then you do get rain outs. This spring was a very wet one, we didn't get on the fields for two and a half weeks, but we prepaid from a certain time, beginning date to end date on that. So I just feel that if we set this up ahead of time, I don't have to come back, or another organization doesn't have to come back, that's nonprofit to you guys, and I think that it would be a smoother operation, and then I can do what you guys have asked, which is a memorandum of understanding through Matt, say, Matt, we have the field, yep, it's free, phenomenal, okay, here's the rate, calculate the rate, go up to the town, give a check. Simplifies things.
And a follow-up question, I understand that it's West River Youth Associations, they don't want to coordinate the timing, the use of the field?
That's my understanding, that, that you guys...
And you work directly with them at that point?
I have to, that's the memorandum of understanding. There's no sense in trying to bug the system.
I, oh, I just, a, a question for the town administrator at this point, since we're talking about Little River Park. I know we got rules and regulations that pursues Little River Park, do we have anything in Stevens Field and the other fields?
Um, are you talking rules in general, or as part of the MOU with ORYA?
Part of the MOU, and in general, both.
Um, I want to say, the memorandum of understanding contemplates the use by ORYA and other outside organizations through the MOU, but the rules for, that we set up are really just for Little River Park, although I think we could probably alter them also for Stevens Field.
Extending them along to the other fields as well?
Like it's supposed to be a carry-in, carry-out park, and what the hours are of those?
Yes.
May I make a suggestion?
Please.
I think that the easiest thing to do, based off of my experience with the REAP Commission, is to make it a memorandum for all recreational facilities within the Town of Lee. That way, it protects the town and the selectmen. And it's an easy change, Mr. Lacrosse.
I agree.
Yeah, there's, there are a few things that are unique to Little River Park, so we would just have to carve that out in the bigger policy that will cover all the parks.
Can you bring that to the next meeting?
Yep.
Okay. I think it's a good idea that we extend it to all the fields.
And you will, uh, go through the pricing issue and go back to them next week, or are we...
Next time being, one, just, I've got, I would love to just start scheduling, so I put in the information there, uh, for at least this field here. Is it acceptable to at least just start scheduling and letting my players know for those dates that I had put down on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and then the rate will be to be determined? Is that acceptable by the board?
What if you don't like the rate that we determine? I'm playing games with you at the same time.
I'm sorry, can I just get clarification? So you said fifty dollars per practice, correct?
Yeah, so if we went from...
From whenever to whenever, but...
Correct. So hypothetically, speaking... So hypothetically speaking, it was from 5 to-
Whatever. Dusk.
Dusk, which depends on the time of year. So it might be one hour, it could be three hours.
Correct.
Whatever it is, it's $50.
Correct.
And then $30 per game?
$30 per game for U-13 and up. And for U-12 and under, $15 per game because you're using half of the side of the pitch.
And that would be regardless, you're asking, that would be whether you're using Stevens Field or the multipurpose field? Or the baseball field? It's whatever field you use?
Great question. If you use that rate for Stevens Field, Stevens Field's already set at a lower hourly rate, but that's-
Why I'm just curious.
Exactly.
But it's a different concept because right now the fee is per hour, so it would be different.
Correct, correct. I don't disagree with you from there. I don't think that is too much to ask for. I think that Maximum Velocity would be more than happy to meet that happy medium because I still feel that it's a good thing to do to give back to the town and the money would go to good use because it goes into the recreational revolving account. So, the answer to your question is yes, I'd be happy to do that.
For all the fields?
Yes, please.
So we will draw up something and, oh, I think you're asking for Stevens Field to-
I just want to know if I can start scheduling it.
So, why don't we set, because you said, you're grateful to $25 per hour for Stevens Field at this time? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, that's not what I said.
What did you say?
The $50, sorry. The $50 per practice.
So that's for Stevens Field and-
For any of the fields.
Okay.
$30 per game for U-13 and up.
Which could be any of the place?
Which could be anywhere.
It's-
$10 per game for U-12 and younger.
Yeah, I have said that. Just notice that this field is less superior-
For the 13 and above, yep.
Than the other fields even. So when you get going later in the year, practicing out here, there's more weeds, there's some divots and everything else like that. You deal with what you have and you play with what you have.
So let me clarify now, if you can by me. You want to use, you want to go ahead and use Stevens Fields for now, just to get going, right?
Yes.
I can let that go at this point and just say, my opinion is go ahead and scheduling Stevens Fields and we'll get back to you with the rest of the stuff.
Right. That's respectful.
All right, that way at least you can get going and-
Let's draw up, we'll draw something up.
It's a lower quality field compared to the others, but you want to get some practice in, it's not game.
Yeah, and my practices won't start for a few weeks, but I can at least let my parents, and that's the key component here, because every parent wants to start planning. I've got parents out here that-
Is that what this is?
And then if I could just add to it, I would agree to pay those rates. Understand that $50 an hour to use Stevens, or $50 per use to use Stevens Field and $50 to use their multi-use field are two different animals.
That's right. And that's why we're gonna-
So, my rate that I pay through Portsmouth Christian is based off of a field the size of- the multipurpose field. So, I know you guys are extremely smart people. I've known you two for a long time and had many great conversations with you. And I feel that you guys would step back and look at this and say, okay, this one would be $30 per use and that one would be $50 per use, hypothetically speaking, based off of if you went by square footage.
You're moving in the right direction, so my suggestion would be to do Stevens Field for now.
So, but can we set the rate too? Because, so he's comfortable with the rate and we're comfortable with the rate? So we can move on?
You have a suggestion.
Well, but you have all the fields, you have to set the rate, right?
Yes, but he just needs to know about Stevens Field right now. That seems to be the time, it's urgent for that particular decision. Town administrator, have a concern.
No, I'm just, well, I have one, I just have a question for Mr. Carlton and I have a question for the board. So when you use the field for a practice, let's suppose you're using Stevens Field, is it multiple age groups, multiple teams? It's not just, or do you take a date and on, just pick one of the dates, whatever date you had, and it's only U-9 and then another day is, do you know what I'm saying? Or do you mix everybody?
We pool train.
Okay.
So pool training is U-10s and below, U-12s and below, U-14, 15s and below. Because when you get into the fall, you have kids playing middle school soccer. And for us, grades are the most important thing. So if a kid emails us and the biggest thing about it is we have an opportunity and a way for these kids to really contact us and the parents and they able to shoot off and say, "I'm not able to make it. I've got an algebra test tomorrow." And just as long as I'm in the know, we're teaching these kids values for later life, time management, stuff like that. So, to answer the question, we pool train because we may not have 20 kids there, we may have 14. And it depends, the fall is a crazy time of the year. I will definitely say that. So we pool train. So like our 11s and 12s would train together.
So we want to set a rate for Stevens Field, that-
I think that would be beneficial for Mr. Carlton and his group.
One question, please. Are you gonna provide the porta potty?
No.
No?
Why would we?
Okay, so that, that's where I was at PCA, they provided the porta potty. So, we do want to- if you do want to do that, would you please take that into consideration, the cost of the porta potty? And I have no problem paying for it, but just take that into consideration of that usage.
All right, I have to ask, what's the cost of a porta potty?
It's like 60, 70 bucks per month?
Yeah.
60 or-
60 or 70.
Something a month.
Yeah, it varies.
So, just on the conversation about porta potties. So, the town pays for a porta potty at Little River Park and Oyster River Youth pays for a porta potty at Little River Park. Ours is there all year round. The one that ORYA provides is not there all year round, so.
Yes, and the UPS guy thanks us for that. The next two.
Yeah, you're 100% correct.
I think this is gonna be a wonderful conversation channel, whatever it is.
So, we pay for one porta potty, I mean-
Open this dialogue, I love it.
If we're sharing costs, we're paying for one porta potty, that's the one at Little River Park.
Yep.
Right?
I'm just asking at Stevens.
And there would be another one that has to be placed here.
May I make a suggestion?
Yes.
What if I were to book the porta potty? Pay for it, then at the end of the season, I were to come back and say, "We paid X dollars for this. Can you deduct our porta potty cost from what you charged?" It might be the simplest and easiest thing to do because then that might be the easiest thing. Or we can go back to what we did last year and we'll just use the field, pay for the porta potty, bring in all the goals and everything else and do the lines. That's your call.
Remind me again how much Stevens Field is now?
Yeah, without a rental fee over there.
He is requesting, you mean what the rate is right now? What he's requesting? Okay. $50 per practice.
Yep.
$30 per game, U-13 and above, and $15 per game, U-12 and above.
That's based off of the larger field and those numbers came from a rental agreement that we have with Portsmouth Christian. This is a smaller field.
So that would really be the 15, it wouldn't be the 25 because that's the bigger field and that's not at Stevens Field?
Correct.
So, and, well, okay, now I have to ask the other question that's probably in me. How does that compare to what ORYA pays?
ORYA does not pay anything for the use of the field, but they pay half the electric, I stupidly did not bring the MOU with me. They pay half of the electric costs, say from, well, it's pretty much when we have it. So it's like April to November. So they pay half of the electric bill at Little River Park. They, I believe, do the fertilizing. They take care of the baseball infield and they probably do a few other things that perhaps I'm not recalling.
You left out the most important, they schedule it.
They schedule it.
Yeah. And they're compensated $27,500 if I'm correct from the town elite.
Well, that's not just, you know that, that's not just for Little River Park.
Correct. But, we-
So for Stevens Field, using it, it's $15 for how they're gonna use it, right? For practices, they're how much?
Okay. Practices would be 50.
Which was based off of-
Right.
The larger field, so I would ask for something different for Stevens Field.
Oh, you would?
Yes.
What would you ask?
Well, I did, that's what I asked and I wrote it down for all the fields.
At first he said yes, and then he said no because it's small.
I didn't hear that. So, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Thank you Denise.
Denise.
So that's not cool.
Did I say that right?
You're right on.
So, $30 would be a fair fee. That way at least it's down in rent.
So, how about if we make this easier? How about if we just say, no matter when you use Stevens Field, it's $20 per whatever, practice or game, I don't really care. You're using it, whatever. And then you do the porta potties and whatever else you need to do. And then there's, that's the cleanest thing in terms of it's a reduced rate for practices, it's a little bit more expensive for a game, but, how would that sound?
Deal.
Well, no, no, you're just talking to me.
No, but you're looking at me like, all right, Joff, what do you think? You're one of three people.
Because that makes it clean. And you don't need to know who's practicing or what you're using it for. It's just as simple, it's $20 every time you use it.
And that, if everyone agrees, but just understand, that's a lot less than what he was, just said he'd pay.
Yep.
Okay.
But that's just Stevens Field.
Correct.
We're gonna talk about the other thing.
Just Stevens Field.
Just Stevens Field, just Stevens Field. That's what he wants so he can move forward. We're coming back afterwards, we're gonna talk about Little River Park later. That's what he needs now to move forward so his parents are happy and they don't call him and email him.
And we pay for the porta potty.
And you pay for the, yes, whatever else you need, you take care of that.
So we can, we can draw something up for Stevens Field.
Well, that's my question to the board, when you say draw something up, I mean-
MOU?
Well, no, I mean, it's still under the structure of the existing MOU with ORYA. So what we would do is I would need to bring back to the board, we're gonna change the fees that we charge for-
Okay.
For, and now we, we, as Mr. Carlton suggested, may want to set up a two-tiered fee system. One is for not-for-profit organizations and then it'd be a different fee if you are a for-profit organization.
So, just for this?
Yep.
That gets him what he needs and he can move forward and move-
Get some started and- So, you gotta explain it to me again. It sounds to be drifting, there's three prices I got here.
I make a, well, I'm trying to make that easier. I make a motion that we allow Maximum Velocity to use the Stevens Field only at this particular time. And no matter what the use is, it's $20 per use. And anything else that he needs, he needs to provide himself for that particular purpose. How do you profit?
Well, the, per use, it's really per date, right? I mean-
Per date?
Yeah, yeah.
Per date.
But that's how I took what you said.
Per use.
Yeah, it's, Wednesday after five.
Per schedule, I mean, whatever.
Per event.
Per event.
Whatever we want. Be it practice, be it a game, be it three age groups on the field, be it one age group on the field. If he is on the field, if Maximum Velocity is on the field, it's $20.
Per use.
That's Stevens Field.
Stevens Field only.
Stevens Field only? And, so let's start with that and we'll see what we can put together around the rest.
You have a motion on the table?
Well, it's not there yet, there's no second.
Oh, that's true. I'm sorry, what's the motion? What we just said? Is that the motion? Did you get that down?
I did.
Okay. I'll second it. All in favor? Any more discussion?
Is this a permanent thing? For every year you gotta come back?
You can say it's this season, just-
This season.
Just this season. Can I make a caveat on that? So it's just this season at this point?
Will the second take that as a friendly amendment? Will the second take that as a friendly amendment for this season?
Okay, okay. All in favor? There it is.
Gentlemen, do you need me to come back in two weeks? I'd be happy to do that if you need me to.
Sure. Well, we're gonna have to put something together for the fields.
For Little River Park.
If you need any insight, I know that field pretty well or that park pretty well.
Yeah, we have to figure out how to structure that, so.
I think I have some people that want to talk.
I'm sorry, sorry?
Oh, I'm sorry. I have a question. I'd like to speak in support of Mr. Carlton.
In support of Mr. Carlton?
Yes.
Okay, well, you don't need any more support.
Maybe not, I don't know. Any gentlemen, my name is Pete Harmon, I live at 7, Captain Parker Drive, here in L.A. Thank you for your time. ORYA and Maximum Velocity are both excellent organizations. I have one child left in that age group. And while you started with the contract, that's a great positive for us. I'm here to ask that you treat both organizations the same point and simple. On March 12th, the Oyster River Youth Association Director stated in regard to raising the fees, and I quote, "So the primary reason for this is, I felt that with some of the requests we had last season, the system was kind of being rigged in a specific group's favor." Rigged in favor of a specific group. And one group gets $27,500 a year in subsidies. One group pays nothing to use the fields. One group has a monopoly on scheduling those fields and priority on those schedules, which provides an incentive for them to raise fees on other groups, thus disincentivizing fees that come back to the town. Mr. Carlton's already demonstrated that you receive lower fees this year in the wake of that. And I realize that ORYA does some great things in their MOU. They do pay half the electric, they do fertilize, they do some field maintenance. Mr. Carlton has provided porta potties, he's brought his own equipment and he is also trying to contribute. My point is, they're both great organizations. And under our constitution, everybody, every entity, every person is equal to, entitled rather, to equal treatment under the law and before their government. So gentlemen, I ask that you consider going forward treating both these organizations equally. If one group gets subsidies, then the other group ought to be able to apply for similar subsidies. If one group gets to use the fields for free, then the other group ought to be able to apply to use those fields for free. This is our town, this is our public property, so why are we treating two nonprofit groups in different manners? Smacks of, just a bad way to do business. So, I hope you'll reconsider going forward that and I thank you for your time and listening to me tonight.
Thank you. Julie Glover, town administrator.
As they've done for the past number of years, the BFW would like to conduct a raffle at the fair and pursue to a whole bunch of different RSA's. The select board has to approve the raffle program.
They do that sometimes.
What's the prize?
10 various prizes. And I should know, I bought tickets every year.
So it's not, you haven't won yet?
Oh, no, I did win, I take that back. I wanted this certificate to a local restaurant. I didn't want to, I haven't used it.
She's, she lost all of her, most of her money.
Do you agree on the argument?
What?
Do you agree with the BFW?
Oh, I don't know.
I didn't hear any second, so-
I didn't dispute it.
We'll get there. My remote currently. What's the matter?
Did you make a motion?
Yeah, I made a motion.
Second?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you make the motion.
You were writing instead.
No, I was just signing right here, where it has Select Board approval, because I knew we were gonna approve it. It's not necessary to do everything in lockstep all the time, John. Okay, that's it, sure. Here we go. Motion's on the floor, but seconded. It's, it's seconded. I'll second it. Well, it's already seconded. You already seconded it?
Yep.
Well, good. Is there any more discussion? No more discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. You may sign this now. Thanks, I already did. Uh, we're running for-
Just one signature.
Yeah, it'll be a second. Yeah, well, there you go. See, that's why I signed it. You're killing me, Smalls.
That's a Cory movie.
You like that one, say a lot?
That is my favorite movie.
That is a famous movie.
You're killing me, Smalls.
Killing me, you're killing me.
Uh, next item, you may recall that we had a warrant article in two thousand eighteen, I believe it was, to fix, uh, rebuild fire hyd, fire hydrants-
James Farm?
James Farm Fire Ponds, Tammerack Road, James Farm. We put the bid out and got the results back on James Farm. Uh, so both Ms. Rossi and Chief Nemet are recommending that the town contract with Jamco Excavators, who was the little bid, on James Farm.
Thirty-three thousand-
Thirty-three thousand three hundred and forty dollars.
Right, and the warrant article was for-
Sixty-two thousand three hundred and forty dollars. So.
Okay. I'll make a motion to contract with Jamco Excavators to make improvements to the James Farm Road Fire Pond from mountain to exceed thirty-three, three forty. That's thirty-three thousand three forty. Do you wanna hear a second?
Take it.
Any discussion, anything, all in favor?
Aye.
Good.
Nope.
You don't have to sign that.
Execute contract.
There you go, motion carried.
Uh, the, Mr. Stevens and I, Randy Stevens and I, met on Friday with the Nottingham Town Administrator. Um, this came out of an exchange, a phone call that he made to me, and an exchange of some emails. Um, as you may recall, they have not had a road agent slash highway supervisor for going on about a year. Um, so one of the things that they're going to do this year is put an RFP out to see if they can find a firm to contract with to assist with snow plowing operations. So in discussing this with Mr. Sterndale and Mr. Stevens, um, we thought that there might be an advantage to having Lee and Nottingham put the RFP out together. So, he's gonna draft something up and send it over to me, he's on vacation this week, so I don't expect to see it. So I didn't know whether that was something that the board, we had talked about this, or we've been talking about, how we may need to start thinking outside the box, for a few things. Um, if it turns out that we end up not wanting to do this, then I think no harm, no foul, we're not gonna be obligated to contract with somebody, but it might just give us an idea of who is out there, and what the numbers are.
I think it's a good move at this point, because we have been discussing it. Like you said, if we decide not to go in that direction, at least we have data.
Yep.
Absolutely.
All right.
I think it's a really good move, I think it could go beyond snow plowing over a period of time, as far as sharing some of the load. Absolutely.
That's it? That's all, that's all I have?
So... That's it? Motion for the consent agenda?
Yep.
Yeah. Somewhere.
Motion to accept the consent agenda?
Yeah, just make a motion, okay. I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
No discussion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, consent agenda is accepted. Looks, 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 sorry. Look, 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 whoops.
I think it just, it's his signature. I think this just needs your signature, and according to what Karen told me, your signing is both the owner and the applicant. It's the subdivision application, to the planning board.
So I just need to sign it here?
Both places.
Both places?
Yeah.
I'm not saying a word. Why do you do that?
I believe you're annoyed.
You're getting a privilege at this time.
You might get to be on top on this one too.
Yeah, Mr. Carlton is spreading the word. That's right. Yeah, he's equalizing. Hey, otherwise you guys would say you're having a tomfoolin' all the time, or something, you never know.
That's my share, well, the big clubs.
Didn't get all the way. No, yeah. Really?
Yeah.
That's what they tell me. Put that in the letter. That's what they do.
Come on, geez.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, can I ask the chief a question before you go to number nine?
Sure.
Chief Johnson, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
And the only reason I'm asking is because it's on your side of the building.
Okay.
Uh, I was here on Thursday, and I was driving around the building, because I dropped it off for the fire department, and as I went around the building, and all it looked pretty nice, until you get over this corner.
From the water that ran off the roof.
Is there something that we can do to get rid of that stain?
Yeah, and we, we hadn't until the, we wanted to get the roof fixed.
The roof's done.
The roof is done now, so, yeah, Bill and I had talked about it. Uh, I think some CLR or something like that, well, we did it once before.
Okay.
Uh, so yeah, we, that's on the-
Okay, because it all looks nice until you get over there, and it looks like-
Looks horrible.
What the heck happened here?
And that's all we were waiting for, just to make sure that the roof got on there, this, before this winter.
All right. Um, so the second question I have for you, which will be relatively easy too. Um, when I was, uh, coming in on Thursday into the fire entrance, uh, bringing some things, it was downpour. I got more wet walking underneath the eaves on that door, than when I was outside, and it was raining. And Chief Nemet said that there's something, you guys tried, it didn't work. Is there something we can do about that? I don't know if there's some-
Which door is this now?
The fire department door.
From this side here?
Yes.
We probably put a gutter above it.
Well, he said you guys had put something, but then it didn't work or something.
I think the problem with gutters is, in the winter, they just get torn out by the snow and the ice.
Well, I, you know, they have gutters now that snap in, so you're only probably talking to six-foot section of gutter. We could put it up there and just pop it out, uh, for the winter.
And the only reason I'm asking you is because you and the chief are working with this back here.
Yeah, we, uh, we tried a diverter, and it didn't work. Um, I think it hurt when the snow was up there.
Okay.
Um, I'll talk to Bill, and maybe we can get a six-foot section of, of gutter, that we can remove in the winter time.
Yeah, well, it was raining, and it was, that was fine, but then when I walked underneath the eaves, it, I got like drenched.
Yeah.
So I'm like soaked and wet, and-
Yeah, because it all falls right in there.
And that's just me, if I'm, if I'm a person from the outside public side, and I'd not be very happy if I had people, or us, so-
And I, most people come into the front door actually for them, but, yeah, it still needs to be addressed.
Oh.
Especially for, you know, we push it away from the walkway on those days when it rains during the day, and then it gets cold enough to freeze at night.
That's true.
Um, so, yeah, we'll take care of it.
Okay. Well, you see, Bill could do it.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Anything else? Okay, I'd like to make a motion, move into enter non-public session pursuant to NHRSA ninety-one hyphen A colon three. Two. I get a second?
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Bugby?
Yes.
Mr. Lacor?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
This stuff, this stuff grows. You gotta sign that, you're gonna have to, huh?
So we got a nine o'clock showing at Sandlot, right, before we're planning on?
You sure? We, we have. I appreciate the fact that you waited, but, you know, we're, we're in a, we're in a, a tough position here.
Yeah.
We haven't received, and have not received, a piece of paper which really should have been submitted to us at least yesterday.
I submitted it on Friday.
We did not receive it in time for the agenda.
It's Thursday.
Which is Thursday noon, and you had all day Thursday, and you didn't get it.
Yeah, no, my, yeah, no, not, not Julie's fault, nobody's fault, but mine. I, I sent it to all my, my clients, and I was, I was preparing for the planning board hearing.
Would you please come up to the podium, and let's discuss this, okay?
Absolutely. So the letter I, I sent, I did not get to Julie when she wanted it, and that's my fault, not hers. I did send it at seven-thirty Friday morning, so she had it.
See, the, the problem we have right now, one of the problems we have right now, and it's, 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 it- First off, we would like very much for, for Karen, Ms. Rossi, to be here, uh, as part of, as part of this discussion. And we would like to have something we can look at, uh, that, that says exactly what your request is.
No, no, I'm sorry. Sorry.
I thought you were asking me for something to look at, so that's what I was gonna provide you, so-
Prospectively. To go into the agenda. Sorry, my apologies.
We're, we're just not in a position-
Your letters are here.
-to give you an answer tonight, I mean, that's, that's the bottom line. We're just not in a position to give you an answer tonight, because we're just, we're kind of at odds with just, you know, between you meeting with the planning board, and coming here and saying, here's what we want, but I can't read what you want. I wanted to, I mean, it's a very difficult situation, I know it's difficult for you, I understand that. It's just that we always seem to be out of sync with, with the, the flow of information to make a decision. And I don't, I don't know why, but we just can't seem to, to get a good, a, a good rapport going here.
And I, I don't know why that is, I thought, I appreciated that, and my client did, that you had a special meeting for us. Um, when we were brought in, in, had a meeting in July second, those were things that were not, I don't, I don't believe, explicit violations. One was Mr. Grumling, and if somebody could trespass when we were closed on his property, then on our property. So we've been proceeding in a good spirit, and we've been disclosing everything we possibly could, even stuff we haven't had, weren't asked to disclose. It's a, it's a tough position. There, we're, we're in a process where they're trying to stay open for business and hang on, while we go through the planning board process after the ZBA sent it back. Um, the, this board has taken its time, and has bent over backwards for us, and I'm not, I'm not at all disparaging your efforts. You've been easy to work with, and, um, this most recent, um, thing is on me. I meant to get it to Julie Thursday, I was supposed to, she asked for it. I got caught up in my preparation for the planning board hearing, and then when I realized it, after the hearing, Karen said we didn't get it, I sent it first thing, uh, Friday morning to Julie. It's not on your agenda, but that was my fault. Um, so, I do know, I did talk to Karen before the hearing, and said, look, do we have any new complaints? She said, no. Uh, you can verify that with her. We are, and at the meeting, there were no complaints that were brought, new complaints that were brought up by the Nate, Nate Butters for the hearing, it was all old stuff. And the discussion we were having was, what are we gonna do about parking, how many spaces, what are we gonna do about hours and days? The planning board was not receptive to Sunday, but they said, you know, come back to us on the thirtieth, and talk about traffic, talk about the lot reconfiguration, and talk about days and hours. And that's where we are, so we're in a tough spot, and we don't wanna put the two boards against each other, we, that's not our intention. So, but we're, they're trying to hang on by their fingernails to, to the season, and, uh, that's, that's the situation they're in. So, um, I don't, I didn't receive any, any communications, um, when this, when we were on the agenda for this week, which was as recently as last Thursday. I had not received any communication saying that any Butters had any new information to provide, um, about our operations. Um, I don't know whether Ms. Glover's received anything.
The, again, the, not on the agenda, because the Butters have no opportunity to be noticed of the meeting and to be here tonight. And Ms. Rossi's not here tonight, and you're asking to increase what you were allowed to do in July.
If we were to say, just give us what we did in July, would that be acceptable?
I don't think you understand, we're not gonna make a decision tonight. That's number one. Number two, I would ask, and I follow the Town Administrator's advice at this point, we would have had Karen Rossi here, we probably would also have my lawyer as well. So you have to afford us an opportunity to, just as you're here representing your client, we need to have our representation by counsel as well.
I understand, so-
So there's not gonna be any decision tonight at this point.
What's the next step, then? What do you, what do you recommend?
You gotta need to get on the agenda for the next meeting? Get on for the next, get on for the next meeting, get on the agenda for the next meeting, which is the thirteenth.
All right, and, um, I will make sure that Ms. Glover has our, our submission.
Appreciate it. Okay, and we'll make sure the rest of the people are here, they need to be here.
I understand, and I, I, you know, it was my initiative to come here and, for the public session, because I've got a client who's hanging on, so I hope you didn't take it the wrong way, that I, I presented and took advantage of the public session part of the program. So just be aware, your submission has to be here to the town offices before noon on the ninth of August, which is the previous Thursday from the meeting. So that's the deadline. We'll meet that deadline. Um, can I ask for some guidance, because, um, we are before the ZBA on the thirtieth, I hope, I mean, the planning board. I don't know whether we'll have a final decision for that time, at, at that meeting. Could we also ask for a, say, from the rest of the season on out, so you don't have to keep coming back each month, um, while you have other business to attend to? Is that something you would consider in our submission?
I think you should put it in your submission. I think you can ask for, you can ask for whatever you want, okay? I mean, that's, I, I don't mean that sarcastically. Put down what you want, and that's, that's what we'll look at. And at that point, once we have that request, then, Ms. Rossi, we review it in our counsel as well.
That's what we'll do then.
Okay.
Right.
Think we should see the minutes? Maybe I should. Yeah. Absolutely. Did you take cards? Solid. Let's hope that Town Administrator can keep herself under control.
My God, I'm sorry. I was really-
You see what I wanted to say?
Uh, so-
Put a ten?
Put a ten.
We need a motion to seal the minutes.
Yeah. I moved to seal the non-public minutes. Can I get a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, no, I don't need a roll call vote for that.
You do.
Do I need a roll call vote for that?
Yes, you do.
Okay. Roll call vote, Mr. Bugby?
Yes.
Mr. Lacor?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Don't you know he's gonna hand you this material? He started walking, he had all the material.
Well, even if you go past that, then you give notice to the Butters, so they cannot comment on this particular thing.
Well, if there's an increase in requests to use, then you need to have our lawyer here as well, all these have counsel from lawyer. What do I need to do? I need to come back in the public or I wanna learn earlier?
Do you need to talk about miscellaneous? There's something.
Yes. And two things.
It's, I don't have this, it's number 10, right?
No, number 11.
Number 11. Miscellaneous?
Miscellaneous.
Mr. Bugby?
Two things. One, can we ask the town administrator to check out the thing with the cemeteries in terms of cemetery goodies being not part of the road agent and that whole situation and where all the money's going, that kind of stuff? That would be appreciated. And I already talked about the stains, so hopefully Bill can work with them to get rid of those because that looks not so good. The last thing is the Meeker thing. The Meeker thing.
Yes.
Are we going to do the two of them together? When are we gonna do this? I propose doing it at the Conservation Commission meeting. I don't know. I have to check with Mr. Hummey and see if that's appropriate.
Do they both attend that automatically? Or you have to invite them there?
Oh, peanut gallery.
Bill is not gonna be at the next meeting and Dave is chairing it, correct?
Bill will not be at the conservation meeting, and I think, I'm pretty sure that Dave is doing chair.
Why can't we do this on a regular?
You have to get them here. So you have to tell them, why do you want to get them here? They both resigned, so...
Yeah, you know, I think maybe at this point here, because I think Bill would probably want to be here when we do the renovation.
Do you want to just...
Do it on the next meeting?
Can we request that somebody from administration call both Meekers and see if they can attend the meeting on the 13th?
Absolutely.
And then we can do, because we have a certificate for both of them.
Yes, we do.
And we have a special thing for David, correct?
Denise?
For David? What special thing?
Town administrator?
You went to Tuts for it?
Mr. Meeker and Mrs. Meeker?
I don't have anything up on my time. I can get something, but I didn't was told to get something at Tuts.
At the last meeting. End of the meeting. Yep. The Tappens are sworn to silence, right? Well, I think they already know. We designated David Meeker as the lifetime volunteer of the year award.
Oh, yeah. A big thing.
The big thing, and then there's a little trophy that you got from Karen.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Oh, my God.
The big thing.
I just had so many things going on with Randy's thing.
And that's not back up on the wall, right?
It's not. I didn't get it back yet.
Okay, all right. Good.
Didn't?
Good. Oh, we've got, it must be something in the air.
Yes, don't even.
It's a new air conditioner. Gives them headaches or some poopers or something.
Freezes our brains. It works really well.
Let's do this again. We have a certificate for Sharon Meeker for her years of service. We have a certificate for David Meeker for years of service, correct? We have on the plaque for the volunteer of the year, we have a little thing on there that says David Meeker lifetime. And we also have a trophy that we got from Karen, which has a little plaque on it that says David Meeker lifetime. And I sent you the words for all that, so we're good with that. So it's at Tuts, and you just haven't picked it up? Okay.
So let's do the next meeting, though.
Thanks, Rick. So if you invite both of them...
Another meeting I wasn't at? No?
Oh, yes, it was.
Hey, you weren't here.
Yes, it was. You weren't here.
So it rolls out.
Well, that explains my not knowing what was going on.
This has been one hell of a meeting, if I wanna call it that. It's been good.
I think I was there with everything at once, unless, um...
So contact both Meekers and let us know if they can attend the meeting on the 13th at 6:30. If not, urge them stringlessly to attend. I think I have to hold and have that bourbon like you are.
See, I knew there was a reason why.
Come on, vibe. My wife's in Arizona. Big boys can play. I just wanted to update you a little bit more about Bedrock Gardens, because I was on the planning board. It's represented on Thursday night. It was quite a long meeting. The planning board has accepted their application, which is for 109 parking spaces down towards the corner of 125 and 152 and Hall Road. So it's there. It looks like the engineering part is pretty much done. I don't know if they'll get the parking lot in this year, probably, maybe in the fall. But that part looks really good. The planning board is now dealing with two or three basic issues. One says the operation, you know, how many days a week and the hours of operations a week. They've already gone to the ZBA to get relief to some extent. The ZBA did not approve weddings, car shows, concerts, and all kind of stuff. They did pretty much agri-tourism type of stuff, you know, educational groups, walking through the park. Everything else is kind of low at this point. I know they're going back in front of the ZBA to do painting classes and yoga classes, I think, but that's part of the ZBA on use itself. So it's really, it's starting to tighten up. They've brought up many, quite a few Butters there, as you probably could imagine. And it was one interesting, Pat Jenkins came up and told a little story which I thought was pretty good. In the sense is that years ago, 152 and Hall Road came into 125, not offset. They all came in all together, and it was on their property, Jenkins' property. And the town or the state came to him and asked him to give up the property to go ahead, allow them to have roads split off. And she made this plea. She said to Bedrock Gardens, you know, we did all this to reduce the congestion of the traffic, and now it's working against us in some ways, and I'm hoping Bedrock Garden people will take that into consideration. We gave, and hopefully you gave a little bit. So I thought she made a very nice speech. But things are getting close to being done. I think we're tying it down. We did motion to them that probably not be any Sunday operation. It's not in print yet, but I think the board has consensus at that point.
Years ago, High Road came out just west of their property.
It came out west?
Further west, so it isn't even in the entrance.
Wasn't even in the entrance?
Wasn't even in the intersection, but at some point they moved it. You can still see where the road ran on the western side of their property. Interesting.
Except for the only thing at the meeting, that took about three and a half hours or so longer.
Can I extend my thanks to the board for their participation last Tuesday in that particular effort? It was a good activity and I appreciated your participation. And it seemed to be consensus with...
It was great.
I think it was...
We got a lot of good comment on it. And the pictures came up, the town crowd, they're good. Nice looking pictures. Yeah, they worked out really. The food was great.
Oh, you're talking about Randy's thing. I was talking about the meeting with the...
Yeah. Wednesday night.
Randy's thing came up great, too.
Wednesdays, yep. Yep. Except for the heat part.
Ladies did a good job.
Except for the heat part.
People did a good job organizing.
That's it on the planning board stuff.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Well, since you had already packed up when you said...
I already put my stuff together.
Exactly.